We'll call meeting to order, rise for applause.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie Rollcall, please.
Councilmember Cantillo?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salzino?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovich?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer?
I'm here. Before we move to the agenda, I'm going to turn the meeting over for a second to GP Roll.
Evening Mayor, this is the Council. Most of you probably saw the news this weekend that our junior police officer that we swore in back in March, Peyton Dennis, died of this cancer. His funeral is going to be Thursday, and there is a GoFundMe page on the Albert Cowboy Peyton Fights DIPG page. His funeral is Thursday. I'd like you to know that Detective Lauren and I were selected to be pallbearers for his funeral, so we will be attending that funeral. If you could make a donation, I'm not asking you to, but if you could, funeral is going to be quite expensive. They still have many other bills that are coming in from his experimental treatments that they were doing. With that, if you could give us a moment of silence for Peyton Dennis, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to refer to tonight's agenda.
Can I make that motion?
Support.
Discussion changes. Sue?
Councilmember Cantillo?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzino?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovich?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, citizen discussion. How about it? Old Business, number four, item A, showboat constructions specs. Michael?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We're at the point, as requested by council, wanted to present to you the construction documents before we went out for bed. I know the council asked us for that, so I've asked, comprehensive engineering, can regularly come up here tonight and show those to you? He does have a copy of the drawings for you and kind of go over where we're at with that at this point. And I thought Michael Lynch was going to be here, but our architect, but I don't know if he's here or not. He's obviously not here. So, but if we could at least turn this over to Ken real quick and go over those stuff for you.
Good evening. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time, whatever time is necessary. I don't know if we really did get PDFs to send over to put up on the screen. So, we did get a set of drawings. We call it ninety percent complete for construction documents. And I don't know if there's an informal way of doing this, maybe not here necessarily at the council meeting, but the set of documents that we've developed mainly focused on the HVAC, heating ventilation, air conditioning. We do also have electrical power on this and touch base on that as well. And then if there could be any questions, I think we'll answer those. But I'll go through what I had identified as the intent of our design. Excuse my, we got large drawings set here. I don't really, I do have a couple handouts. If anybody should need those following this meeting, I can leave those behind on the table, as well as a couple of these larger set drawings. But the showboat HVAC design intent, which is the heating ventilation, air conditioning, is to provide a hot water heating system, chill water cooling to the HVAC equipment. The HVAC equipment consists of unit ventilators that are within the space to maintain heating and cooling as this boat will be designed as a building sitting on water and conditioned year round. There's a central plant that houses the boiler, the chiller on the stern, the backside, which includes circulating pumps. The plant equipment is designed for redundant boilers and pumps, so if we lose any one pump or any one of the boilers, we can still have some backup heating. Piping is completely copper tubing because we have a metal boat. We're not constructed of like a typical commercial residential wood construction. This is a metal boat, so it's all copper. We are intended to monitor the central plant equipment as well as the HVAC equipment and the sensors of the space temperature to integrate controls with the city building energy management system that you currently have. So, there'll be an integration, a communication to the boat end of this building energy management, the city building. We also are designed for summer air conditioning. This is not your typical boat. It's, we're designing, and Mike Lynch, Mike referred to earlier, is the architect of record. He'll be sealing the set of drawings, as I will be the engineer of record, sealing the set of drawings for the engineering of this. The boat as recognized as a building will be an assembly. We have an occupancy level. I believe it's two hundred people max. So, we've got a design for the intent of safety as part, as well as satisfaction with the temperatures within the space, both heating during the summertime, the winter time in the air conditioning, heating in the winter time and the air conditioning summer. We do have a packaged chiller that's dual compressor, so when I say that, we can lose part of the chiller and still have the second chiller remaining to operate to limp us through an even event or day event during the summertime. We are rejecting the heat to the river. It's a closed loop. Water never comes in contact with the river water, but it indirectly comes in contact with what we call a Q cooler. This is a patent design that's come out of Boston. We've been working with engineers to develop this design for other larger boats and yachts, so we are taking on that design as rejecting excess heat. So, as we're producing the chill water for cooling, the rejected heat goes into a pumped loop that's along the side of the boat, opposite of the shore. That will be submerged before we go into the water. Going a little bit, I want to touch a little bit about the HVAC equipment within the space. These will be, no, these will be standard type units that are going to provide air conditioning, heating, as you would see in your schools. A lot of our old school buildings, we see these unit ventilators that sit on the floor, being clogged in the space about fourteen inches, and they do take ventilation air off the side of the boat. So, there'll be lube or heat mounted that will communicate to each one of these. We have approximately four per level. We have what we call a main deck, which is the boarding deck through a boarding gallery, access in two different locations for our means of egress and entry. There is a backside. There's three total access to the boat. That level will be served by four of these unit ventilators, all having a thermostat controlled from the space. There's a next level, we call it O one deck. We don't call it second level. We actually call it O one. That's being consistent with the boat designer. And then we have an O two deck, which is the top level, right? And that will have its own dedicated unit ventilator, which again takes air from the side and it's a floor mounted unit. All those HVAC units will be communicated via piping. We call it a four pipe system, so we're communicating all back from the central plant, the heating boiler and the chiller. There's going to be some challenges to this construction. The boat comes in pieces. We will need to have some work done as the boat arrives. The contractor that we're looking to bring on board will, this will be a bid set, so that we'll be making some decision recommendations on who would be doing the work, who had to have that contract in place. And that contractor who's going to do the install furnishing equipment, install really onboard contractually before the boat shows up here, so that when the boat does show and we're starting to, contractors are starting to put the boat together, we need to have what I call the mechanical electrical subs here, working on it as well before it goes in the water. One other thing I want to point out is we will have a winter snowmelt system. Now, due to cost, we really scaled this back, but I pushed it and pushed it only because of the concerns of longevity of the material of the boat being steel. We don't want to really have salt on this boat, but what we did is we scaled it back to what we call the boarding gallery. Really, it's just the main level as we're bored that's exposed to exterior. We're not, we've cut back on the areas that would be outside in the occupied space up towards the front of the boat on levels O one and O two. This was a significant reduction of ninety percent or more. So, it's a small part. Since we have the boiler already, we're simply going to make a glycol, a pump glycol, just a small part of what we call the boarding gallery. And all that pipe will be running the hull. We need to maintain access to the hull to run pipe. A lot of that pipe has to be dealt with copper insulated, and we're using T's in little manifold. We're using insulated T's for a PEX. PEX is a material that's used. It's all closed loop, but it's for the glycol snowmelt that would be adhered underside of the deck and insulated. But that has to be fuel installed. The point I want to make about the glycol snowmelt is that it would be a manual on off. We aren't looking to make this automated. Again, to save some cost, but yet we don't know the schedule and when you will use this boat for an event, a winter event. So, the intent was anticipate based on scheduled events is getting the snowmelt pumped, glycol pumped and start melting if there's accumulation of snow. Or, you know, at discretion of the sun, if there's a better way of starting to schedule snowmels based on snowfall or temperature, we'll have that flexibility. But at this point, it's more of a manual. It'll be still monitored by the central building energy management that's located as part of this building here. There's going to be a lot of challenges. This is a building that's on water, but it's not built and constructed of our standard building materials. So, we're looking for the city to bring on some commission startup. That's going to have to be what I call shakedown. We're going to start a system that's been developed, designed by our firm, installed by contractors, and controls and startup. We're going to have to run through a number of different times. If anybody's been in a part of the construction industry, we know that, you know, those last few weeks where we're trying to get things running, we're shaking down the controls, making sure that the intent of the design is being met and the operation is going to meet the city or the owner's needs here. So, we're recommending that there's a lot of test and balance. There's third parties that want to have a part of the contract so that we can get startup and we can turn over a system that's actually witnessed by the engineer or will be involved personally, and that we turn over a product that's worthy of the city. I know there's a long history here of this boat, and I have to say, this has taken the low showboat another step beyond what we've had in the past for the city well. But I believe that this is longevity. This is also safety. This is also looking at keeping and maintaining the materials of this at a much longer time, hopefully beyond the time in which I would be here. Any questions on what I just described on our system?
Ken, I have a question. I know we talked about it at the committee level about the issue with the snowmelt. Is it possible to, when you write your specs, to write it for the full snowmelt like we talked about initially, and then just the area where we put the ninety-five percent contracted version? Is it possible to do that? Because then maybe it's not that expensive for us and maybe we can cut somewhere else.
So, my response is yes, we can bid that as all. We were intending to do that back when I first brought this to this council, is that we could bid this as alternates. We've already had some budget pricing done on the, what we call, design development drawings. They're approximately fifty percent done, complete as far as drawings, but they did go out to contractors who responded with some quotes. They quoted it pretty hard, and we are looking for, we don't know exactly what that number was because it came in as one lump sum. So, I think to answer your question, Mike, that would be prudent on our end is to skip these as a separate price so that at least we can entertain the idea.
Question we asked earlier about why we couldn't have boiler and the chiller onshore in the building where the bathrooms are going to be and eliminate two sets of equipment?
Yeah. Right now, the way I have it set is we have the ship to shore power that's going to power the boat, and that power would actually come in and feed these central plant heating cooling units, the central plant boiler and chiller. I do have a whip, I do have a gas boiler line coming in that's going to have to be a flexible tubing. We could possibly design a central plant, take that central plant, and I'm going to answer your question this way. It is possible. You know, we think we can save some money in doing this and moving it back. It would certainly give up some space that we've occupied within the boat itself. You're still going to need some, you know, support for the boat, but honestly, this chiller takes up, I'm going to throw a quick number, six foot by eight foot, and that's without the clearances. There's all the pumps that could probably be put into offshore. But we would have to come up with a four pipe system that really could then reach into the boat, and it would have to have some means of flexibility, which I'm sure we can come up with hydraulic hoses for one. Not that we'd run hydraulic through with maybe hot water and chill water hoses. So, I wouldn't discount that idea if we think there's, could be some savings. And maybe this is too, when we're honing into the budget and what these costs are coming in, the bids are coming in, and if we really feel that there's an opportunity to save some money, I'm going to ask the contractors to have input. You know, volunteer, which just like you just asked the question, but bring some cost to it. If we could put that and have room offshore and you have a building there, I wouldn't be opposed to it. There is going to be a cost to getting the place over to the boat, and honestly, it would, I look at that as being like an engineer, a manufacturer, insulated set of lines for them, if you will. It would probably be buried. I don't want to see them buried. And then somehow we would have to communicate to the boat. I don't know if that is it.
Well, we're still going to need snowmelt, and we're going to need these same systems in that building, I think. I'm in HVAC business. When you start talking about redundancy and double this and double that, we've got a budget to work with here. You know, this guy is not the limit. You're going to bankrupt just with your description.
And honestly, I could, I could take that feedback as you describe, and you being HVAC, you could say, look at, Ken, you're the engineer on this, but yet here I want to offer this as a savings. And knowing that this is redundant, I spelled it out as a design intent, and we want to save some money here, knowing we're under a budget, we could really just lop off that side of the chiller. That pump is designed as if I could take half that chiller away, half, one of the pumps gone, and you lose your chiller, you're out, you're sending everybody home.
Well, this isn't a lunar landing that we're going to or a nuclear submarine. If the thing goes down, somebody comes and fixes it. We have a price point we need to get to, and I think we're in trouble with it. We'll see.
No, I don't disagree with your, that you're being candid, and I'm open to that idea. The boiler, on the other hand, on heating, might be a little more concerned not having some redundancy. Do we need double the boilers? I got two boilers now. Really, we can get rid of one boiler. But we lose that boiler, then we're down, and we're sending everybody home. Our biggest concern would be, you know, freezing. And that really concerned me more so than, you know, comfort air conditioning in the summertime.
I, I owned part of a construction company for a long time, and I can't tell you the last time I had one of our boilers go down, and we couldn't have it back up within forty-five minutes. I mean, they're, they're all bulletproof. I don't like the fact that you're talking about putting a gas line between the sidewalk and the boat. Those are just inherently dangerous. They don't bend, they don't flex, and they really don't like climate change. If you run your force system over, you can run the stainless steel braided, those move, loop, because we do know what the maximum and the minimums are, what the river's going to move. So, you've got to be able to match all that. You go playing with gas lines like that, I've never seen anything good out of that. I built a lot of stuff.
I do intend to use a flexible gas line, but I understand your point. That's probably a safety. I don't know, we need to really make sure, really make sure that we've got covered. Part of that, too, will be our customers' energy employee, making sure that they buy off where the meter is. And honestly, I think the meter's actually coming, and gas is coming from the, from the DPW. I think we're pulling the gas from there.
From the building we're across. Yes, correct.
Any other questions?
I do need to alert you to another matter with the, with the design. I was hoping Michael was here, but he's not, so I'll try and explain it the best way I can. Some point in the beginning design, and engineering of the boat, there was, there was a discrepancy that occurred between the committee and the engineer to where the first floor would be nine feet, there'll be nine feet and ten inches clearance, and then once you put all the bulkheads and all that, and the steel stuff in, you're at eight feet. So, the first floor is not an issue. The second floor in the wheelhouse, we have learned, is now becoming an issue to, when the committee and the engineers talked, there was supposed to be eight feet. The goal of the committee was eight feet ceiling height on the second floor, eight feet ceiling height clearance in the pad, in the wheelhouse. The engineer gave us eight feet. The problem is, once with the bulkheads and with the, with the bulkheads and the ceiling, once they finish the ceiling and all that, you run the, run the risk of about seven feet on the second floor and about, I want to say about seven feet, two inches on the third floor, and areas where there's bulkheads on the second floor, six feet, eight inches clearance. Now, can't, I'm trying to figure out who's responsible for this, because this was all, all was done before I was involved in the design. This was all the committee. I was not a part of the design. And we're trying to figure out what the, what the solution is. My concern is with Cfly, I can fix it, but the problem, but the problem is, is supplies and materials are now being ordered for the boat, and we need to, we need to make, we're going to have, we're going to have to fix this relatively quick. My concern is it's going to be a kind of hefty change order cost with Cfly and not even knowing what might happen with Moran with the steel. And we're, I, I don't know who made the mistake, quite honestly. I'm still trying to figure out whether it was the committee or Cfly. I don't know who. If it's Cfly who made the mistake, then I, my opinion is that they should fix it at no cost. But if there was a miscommunication between them and the committee, I, I don't know.
They should be paid for work to.
Well, I've been trying to go through that, and that's part of the challenge, is I don't, I don't see it. I mean, I've spent quite a bit of time trying to go through this, trying to figure this out on my end, and I still don't, I don't have answers yet. So, I'm trying to get them.
Why can't they, that those current heights, we aren't code compliant as far as the ceilings?
There is no code because it's not a building.
No one will take jurisdiction. That's the problem.
It could be four foot ceiling.
And the problem is with boats, they design boats differently than buildings. So, for a boat, which was envisioned, this is not, from what I understand, this isn't an issue. But in a building, it is. But no one will take jurisdiction out of that.
Right. I think we had more, we had ten feet on the old boat.
Yeah, I don't.
We're already shrunk down from, and it was way more than eight feet. We have a miniature version.
So, I mean, try, I mean, there might be a change order that has to be made, or we, maybe we live with it. I don't know. I hate to have a significant change order when we already have budgets, you know, we're on a tight budget as it is with the finishing.
I guess we know why the architect's not here.
Yeah, I don't know why.
You delivered the bad news.
Yeah. Just letting you know that as well.
Don't the ceiling heights come from the architect's drawings? I'm, I don't have the construction.
The architect came, well, part of the issue is the architect came later when the committee had already built some CAD drawings that they, that they envisioned, and they gave over to the engineer, and the engineer took those. Now, the question is, the question is, was there, what was the communication between them, whether, you know, whether, because if you look at the plans, the plans say, in some, one of the plans says eight feet ceiling height, but to an engineer, maybe that means something differently. Something happened. I'm still trying to figure it out.
Eight feet ceiling means different things.
Eight feet is eight feet.
Different people.
And then you said you were doing the electrical on it, too?
Yeah. So, in hand with question about the chiller, the chiller being, having a hundred percent redundancy with pumps, we're at four hundred amp service.
Single phase or?
That's three phases.
And that seems like a lot of power.
It is a lot of power. We read the numbers again. We double checked it. It is driven by the chiller. So, again, if we come back and look at, if you don't cut in half that chiller, we can take that down. Absolutely. We're better with three phase than we are single phase with this boat.
Oh, I agree. It's cheaper to run it. Steve's going to be happy with the bill, but like Paul would be more than happy to bill us for it. It just, that just seems like a ton of power.
Well, at the NEC, we go by the code, and that four hundred is driven by the connected load. It doesn't mean it's going to operate at four hundred amp. In fact, we see it operating less than two hundred amp. In fact, we see the chiller, which driving this, two hundred amp, being a big factor. So, that, it's all starting with the chiller that's pumping. I'll just go right there with it. I mean, there's, there's opportunities. I don't disagree. But if we go on, if we go on the streets, get the numbers, which we have some numbers right now, we still have them broken down, and we choose to lop off half that chiller, that's, that's, that's fine. And I do see that we can place it in our, in our bid contracts also to price out what that reduction is to the main breaker size.
Speaking of numbers, do we have, I mean, we got two point three million from the state. I know we did some fundraising and stuff before that.
I can kind of speak to that. So, right now, we have about, we have about two point six million dollars committed. We have about one and a half million on what Moran to build, to build the whole of the frame. So, that gives us about another one point one million dollars. Our estimates have come in between one point three and one point five million. Now, I understand, they don't have a full set of plans, so there's, they're giving you their best estimates, basically. And their, their estimates, I know at least, I spoke to one of the, the people that we got the estimates from. They went very high because there were a lot of questions. But they also said that with that, you know, you might, you can shave a lot of things out of this. You can get that, you can get that down, but there might be other things that come up once you have the full plans that.
And that includes the bathrooms in the DPW building?
Yeah. Well, the DPW building is a hundred, the bathrooms itself are a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If you do the full building, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars based off the estimate we have. So, right now, you, it looks like we can only afford the bathrooms, so we have the hundred and thirty one thousand. We know that that cost to be estimated a hundred and thirty one thousand.
We, we, a couple months before, we need to have, what is the final day for the final plans? What are we looking at?
My understanding is the final plan should be here in January. Am I wrong? Am I correct on that list?
We're prepared. Yeah. I think the biggest issue is getting feedback from our board guys about that height. I think Mike was kind of looking to get that resolved.
Yeah.
Now, the architect wasn't in this from the beginning. I mean, we had a committee that kind of hears our plan, hears the picture, what it's going to look like. Here, you designed this boat.
They, they hit the engineers first, and then the architect came aboard. That's my understanding. The architect, I believe, came out in twenty eighteen, mid twenty eighteen, and then that's when he started working with it. And why the architect wasn't involved in it, I honestly don't know. I don't have an answer for it.
Is that our construction manager's problem then? I mean, did we get the cart before the horse?
We may have. I, I, you know, I.
Our construction manager to do this? I have a construction manager to do this. He should've been right on top of that and caught that.
He did?
Yeah. Yeah, we've been asking about the heights, can I speak for a moment?
Sure, let's go to podium if you would.
The height of the ceiling is always something that you ask for, right? We have been asking, since I came on, kinda halfway through too. And part of it is the discovery process of the engineering, and also trying to figure out like how much the construction of these steel beams take up in space height between the floors is completely different than standard construction. So until we got all of those drawings finished, we didn't know that we're losing like 10 inches under the floor for structure of steel, which of course eats some of your ceiling height up. You know, so those are things that we just were not aware of until those drawings were more complete. And then also, we lost some space with the heating and cooling in the bulkheads. You know, however that was designed, which we've been going over that, and over that, and over that, trying to get more headroom, basically. But six foot eight on that deck one, which is actually the second floor, I mean, that's like right here. So some of you tall guys are gonna feel like you're gonna hit your seat pad. And then seven feet is just, that's not even a standard like ranch house ceiling height, you've gotta get eight feet in there. To me, it's like, you know, not really negotiable.
So how long have you known that you didn't have the ceiling height?
Um, like, less than two weeks.
I found out two, probably never.
Right.
I think we talked about it just after the last council meeting, right? So a couple of weeks.
Yeah. That Friday we met, and I've coffeeed at the council.
Yeah, so the Friday before that, yeah.
The day before, I coffeeed at the council, it was a lot harder.
Yeah.
So we, we, once we had the engineering meeting with the architect there, and kinda were going over lighting and fans, and realized we don't have enough room for fans, because they're too low, you know, because of that ceiling height issue, weight, and that. You know, so that's when we understood what was going on with that. It's, it's really all about construction, heating and cooling, taking up more space than anyone could imagine, like a standard construction.
And the architect can't be here to answer questions, that's really disappointing.
Yeah, he said he was gonna be here.
I don't know what happened.
Well, we had this email describing like exactly what's happening on each floor that we got today.
Yeah, we got that.
So we could actually just quote that, there's, it's just information that everybody can see.
Just make sure of that.
And you need to see it so that we all are looking at the same numbers. Because that was part of the issue, we've all been asking about the ceiling heights all this time, but every time we addressed it, it was a different answer. So it's been kind of an engineering process. You know, through the Sea Fly and through, you know, what happened, what needs to happen with heating and cooling, and also the buildup, like how do you hang ceilings, and how do you wrap these beams and things like that? So it's really a complex issue, you know, and it's, it took, I would call it the discovery phase. It's like we're just getting to the end of this, actually understanding how this all works phase, so.
And they're starting on the boat.
Luckily, luckily, they have not cut any steel.
They haven't cut steel. They haven't cut anything, though. Supplies are, have been over.
Can we, um,
You say you're made for the record, please, I'm sorry.
Shannon Parfield.
Thank you.
Can we get the architect and the project manager that they wanted to use in here? Because really, he should've caught this. That's project manager's job. I've done it hundreds and hundreds of times. Hopefully you have errors and omissions insurance that covers your mistakes. Yeah, we pay for professional services, I don't see that.
Is Moran aware of the problem?
I have a former app, what's going on?
So they're not gonna build the decks?
They're gonna hold off.
Tomorrow and...
No, I, I, I've told them to hold off on that part of it right now.
That's what I was worried about.
The paddle wheel looks good though.
Yeah, paddle wheel's been built, it's been built.
Yeah, no, we, we, as fast as possible to get him in here.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Luke D'Agostino. I was the head of the committee, it was all put together. And I guess it was a lack of communication between the committee and Sea Fly. We wanted to finish sort of like Shannon said, we wanted to finish eight feet. I guess we did not make that clear to Sea Fly. And then we sort of had the designs book, and then we decided what type of heating system we needed, like Shannon did say, how much that would eat up. There is a difference in finished height, roughing height, and finished height. So you do have to compensate from the beginning. So, being part of this from the beginning, I would say it is the committee's issue. I guess we didn't communicate it to Sea Fly. It has nothing to do with the project manager. Nothing. Project manager didn't get involved in this. And Liz, and hopefully you guys will back me up on this, until it was too far along. Sea Fly had already submitted their structural plans to Moran. And the bid was out to Moran. City accepted the bid, and if I'm wrong in any of this, anybody can stand up and tell me I'm wrong. But it was submitted to Sea, Sea Fly, Sea Fly submitted it, so we could, the city could put it out for bids, it was put out for bids. And it's knowledge to me that two weeks ago, they said it's only gonna be seven foot two, six foot eight.
Who said that?
Sea Fly.
Well...
No, no, the architect.
Moran. The architect and Moran, basically.
Well, the architect was going off the drawings.
No, Moran, Moran's got eight, Moran, Moran's going off the cut sheets. And Moran's not involved in that part of it.
Okay, okay. But the project manager, it'd be a waste of time, as far as I'm concerned. What I think should happen is, the city should contact Sea Fly and find out. You know, get their story. They've already gotten the committee's story. And then meet halfway, and if the city has to pay more to change order, then that's so be it. Because you have, you have a structure here, and you don't wanna, you don't wanna skip on it. We're too far along, we have 2.6 million dollars. We're too far along in this process to go backwards now. You know. Greg, Marty, and, you know, you're all businessmen, you know how this happens. You don't like it to happen, but it has happened. So you face the problem, and you, you make the problem go away. Okay, so it costs an extra $20,000? You know, if I was in your shoes, I would call Sea Fly and say, what is this going to cost? So everyone in this room can make an educated decision on what it's going to actually cost to change, make the change order. Because I think it's pretty important to have eight foot finished ceilings on the second deck and the cake pilot's house. Does everybody understand what I'm trying to be as clear?
At a minimum, but I have a problem here that, you know, we worked on this, and we had a committee of volunteers, and a local lady drew it all up. We're doing this all by the book, we're paying top dollars for everything, and apparently our amateur design went out for bids instead of having the architect design this properly. I just, somehow, we didn't have the right people in this at the beginning.
Well, that could be. I'm not gonna argue that point, but you hit the nail on the head by saying it was volunteers.
But, but when it gets handed to the professionals, and we're paying, I think, wasn't the number 25,000 to Sea Fly to start this?
Well, I ended up being one, close to seven.
Yeah, I mean, whatever. They take some responsibility for this project, that's why they got paid.
No, I, I understand that, but what are you gonna do?
Hold their feet to the fire.
You're holding feet to fire for a year until you get an answer? Go through the force system or whatever?
I would assume they haven't been paid yet.
No, I think they've been paid.
Paid them upfront?
They can handle it when they want, yeah. I mean, say, anyone's...
They haven't even started building the boat yet, we shouldn't...
No, this is, it's two entities, Greg. The engineers, you know, the engineers designed it, and they were paid. And the boat people, what they have been paid so far, I have no clue. But it's two different entities. Sea Fly was paid to engineer, we had to get engineer, you know, engineer...
Right, no, we, we had professionals all along that reviewed our contract, you know, everything on this, we paid professionals to do this right. Now we have, I think you're probably coming up way short at 20,000, I bet it's 100,000.
Okay, we could, I just, I have no idea. I've never run into this.
But it has to be, because we can't have a boat, I mean, I think the ceilings on the old boat were close to 10 feet on that. At least nine.
Well, up on the second deck in the cookie room, they were only about eight feet. But I mean, eight feet and a half feet.
To, to fix the boat, that's, that's, the money's there to do it. But that means there are things that just aren't gonna happen. Whether it's, we don't do a finish out on wheelhouse, we don't do the finish out on the second floor right away. There's all kinds of things that are gonna have to happen.
I agree 110%.
They painted floors instead of carpet?
No, I, I agree. There has to be, you people have to understand that there's only so much money, and if you do the math, 2.6 million you have.
Quite rare of how much money's there.
Yeah, and, and the bid came at 1.5, 1.3, yes, they weren't total plans, I understand. I was one of the bidders that bid on it. I understand that. But in these projects, you always, I've always told my customers, you can count on 20% over. Just because you get halfway through the project and something comes up. If you don't do it now, it's gonna cost you 50 to 75% a year or two from now. I don't like to say this, but I'm, I'm a real person. Reality is, we have to address this problem to get the showboat moving forward.
Do you feel that eight foot is the correct height, or do we need to ask eight foot six? And that thing, now that we're, we're looking at that part of it, so is eight the magic number, or do we need to go higher? Right, exactly.
Eight finished, but that is going to depend, in my opinion, what type of heating system, where the bulkheads have to come down, and that, to me, is still to be determined.
We don't have that information, so it's kinda hard to ask, say, let's go get eight foot, we might need eight six.
You know, it's, it's a difficult situation, it's not an easy build. You know, there's nobody that I know in the state of Michigan that has built a boat from scratch, or finished a boat like this. I've said that all along. But I think as, as a city, and as a project manager, now that he is aboard, it's his duty, or her duty, to find out how this can be put together properly. So we don't run into this problem halfway through, and the contractor that it was awarded to says, well, we, we didn't figure that. I mean, we need an over $50,000. You know, I, I don't know what else to say other than what I said. And I, I hate to say that.
I'd like to slay a computer flowchart, and in my mind, the first thing we need to do is make sure it doesn't get built. Number two, find out how much it's gonna cost to change it. Then we can try, if we're gonna try and assign blame, or maybe make, see if Sea Fly'll eat half the cost, or whatever. But first, we need to find out, because we're all speculating, could be 20, could be 100. Who knows? If we just do one step at a time, I think that's the way to go. I, I mean, our goal is to end up with three floors of eight foot ceiling finished height, so people can stand up and not feel like they're in a closet. People like dunk or sleuth.
Er, yeah. Er was a tall ass guy. Six foot nine, the shoes are, I don't even get it.
I wanna say something now. Carol McGregor drew the original designs, and it clearly said 10 foot ceiling to, ceiling to, sorry, floor to ceiling, 10 foot. She also had 10 inches in between for mechanical and whatever. Under, on the second deck, which they call the O1 deck, it was clearly eight foot. Sea Fly said that our drawings were vague, but they never questioned us when they sent those drawings back to us. We were warned about Sea Fly, and we didn't listen. So there's a lot of things going on here, and yes, mistakes have been made. But, you know, Carol did an awesome job, and I can show you those drawings yourself, and you can see them. So...
And she's not an amateur.
She's not an amateur.
Not somebody who just picked up a pencil and said, I'm gonna draw.
No, she did a beautiful job, but it's still a committee of local people and we're paying somebody, I, I'm not being critical.
No, I know, I just, I, you know, we're just as upset about this as anybody, if not more. But, um, you know, I, I feel like Sea Fly has some responsibility here, whether we can hold them to, you know, make them come through is another story.
Well, I think Cliff's right, we need to figure out, probably go forward, and then we can assign blame in the meantime. But you can't hold up the whole thing just so you can figure out who can spank. We can blame them along the way, but...
We need to move forward, but I think there's, there's some responsibility.
We do need that architect. I think it should be a committee of the whole, so that we can dedicate all the time just to the one thing.
By the time, your next committee of the whole is Saw Grant, that, that's the next council meeting, that's gotta be done. So, um, the next council meeting, you can do it at the beginning of January, or second meeting of January right now, unless you wanna call a special meeting.
Well, let's just do it at our next meeting during the regular counseling, and it's gonna be a late night, but this is important, you gotta figure this out.
I agree.
Just a question, I mean, we had a contract. Dick, did you review that for us, as far as the, the building of this at all? I'm assuming that someone looked that over?
Oh, yeah, Dick.
Yeah, I, I looked at the Sea Fly contract and the Marine contract. I've not seen an architect's contract or a construction manager's contract. Don't know that they exist.
Do they?
I'll be honest with you, I, I don't have any answer. That was, Rich was involved with this project, he handled all of that.
We have contracts with the construction manager and the architect. Where, where are they?
Um, I'm sorry. I don't have possession of them, but I'm pretty sure they're in, like, in, in our big, um, package.
All right. Any of the others on this? Well, damn good luck getting Saw Grant done. I'm gonna stop that.
Uh, I won't stop. We'll get going. As Mike mentioned, in another couple weeks, we'll be talking to Saw Grant finally, and getting that taken care of. Part of that, part of that has to do with having our asset management plans, and that's what this saw program is all about. So what we have done, what our engineers have done, is put together the asset management plan for wastewater and for stormwater, and also, they put together the asset management programs. The programs take the plans and tell us how we're gonna operate with these plans. What we need to do as a city first is to...